Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We will have our invocation by Pastor Dan Phillips and our pledge allegiance by Commissioner Turner.
Let's pray. Our fathers, we are assembled here in this very special room. We know that we're not in a church, but Father, we are still in your presence. And Father, the men and the women in this room, regardless of where they are seated right now, genuinely care about our area and our county. So, Father, I ask that you make your presence known, that, Father, that we open our hearts to express our care and concern about our county government, about the place where we live, the place where we do business, the people that we come in contact with. But, Father, may everything that is done and said in this place be done knowing that our heavenly Father is watching us and watching over us. So, Father, direct the proceedings of this meeting, and may we go from this place knowing that we live in a place that we love, and that we want to show others the place that we love. For, Father, it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our common age under God in indubital wisdom with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Gentlemen, if you had a chance to look over the minutes, I hope...
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of January 19, 2018.
And we have a proper approval?
Second.
A proper second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion moves. All right. We have on our list here that we were going to have a presentation by the sheriff's office, but that's going to be put off until our next meeting, which would be in February 13th. And at this time, I'm going to say, "Thank you, Sheriff, for everything that you do. I'm very pleased with hearing it out there from the citizens that they're... They can see things happening. It's a good thing." And I'm glad to see these awards.
Mr. Chairman, since we're applauding the sheriff, let me give a personal testimony. Recently, we had a shooting out in the West End, and I don't believe I publicly said this, but the sheriff and his staff was really on top of that. And the helicopters were out there, and he did everything in his power to keep the citizens of our area informed, including myself, so we could share the word and be on the watch for these two people that were trying to escape. The sheriff, I want to say to you publicly, thank you. My wife went on to bed. She wasn't worried about it. She knew we were in good hands. I, on the other hand, stood outside waiting, but I appreciate everything you did. And really, it's nice to see now that you're in control and you have these situations handled. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that opportunity.
Not a problem. It's good to hear. Okay, at this time, we're going to do a proclamation for Mr. Dr. Ahmad. Mr. Ahmad, if you would come forward. Carl Flag, if you would come forward. This is kind of an honor for a man who has been a doctor in our... Was it 43 years?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven years. Forty-seven years as a doctor in our community. Come up to the podium. I'm going to meet you out there.
Matter of fact, we don't go out there.
You go down, and we'll come down with you in a minute.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and to the county commissioners, administration, to our clerk of court, and to all of our citizens who have gathered here this morning. I certainly am humbled to stand by such a great man in this, our community. And I would also ask that if his two longtime assistants would join him, Ms. Edna Merwin and Ms. Bobby Yeverton. Mr. Chairman, again, I don't want to make this extensive, but I do want to say that this community has been blessed for almost a half a century with the professional services and the caring spirit of Dr. Iftikah Ahmad. He's been my personal local physician for all of my adult life. He has served countless families throughout this community. Dr. Ahmad does not need to be introduced to this community because when he came with the passion for the people of this community, it was well demonstrated through his practice over all of these years. This doctor, ready, willing, and able, brought to the table humility, integrity, and simplicity. This doctor is a consummate professional, practitioner of modern medicine. Dr. Ahmad is imitated but never duplicated. When he took his oath of office back in the day, and he made a commitment to serve this community, it was just phenomenal. I am certain that this community did not realize who was coming when Dr. Ahmad looked at this community and thought, "Oh, my." And it didn't take long for his passion to develop. And Dr. Ahmad has instilled faith in the hearts of many. He's inspired countless individuals throughout this community. He has been a preceptor, a mentor, and has been one who has demonstrated, even through tough times, even as our local hospital has gone through ups and downs, Dr. Ahmad has been a stabilizer. He's been the foundation of physicians throughout this community and has made such a difference in the lives of many. I want to pull just a couple of excerpts from the Hippocratic Oath, which simply says, "I will respect the hard-won scientific gains of those physicians in whose steps I walk and gladly share such knowledge as is mine with those who are to follow. I will apply for the benefit of the sick all measures that are required, avoiding those twin traps of over-treatment and therapeutic nihilism. I will remember that there is art to medicine as well as science, and that warmth, sympathy, and understanding may outweigh the surgeon's knife or the chemist's drug. I will not be ashamed to say I know not, nor will I fail to call in my colleagues when the skills of another are needed for a patient's recovery. I will respect the privacy of my patients for their problems are not disclosed to me that the world may know. Most especially must I tread with care in the matters of life and death. If it is given to me to save a life, all things, but it may be also within my power to take a life. This awesome responsibility must be faced with great humbleness and awareness of my own frailty. Above all, I must not play at God. I will remember that I do not treat a fever chart, a cancerous growth, but a sick human being whose illness may affect the person's family and economic stability. My responsibility includes those related problems if I am to care adequately for the sick." Again, Dr. Ahmad, his modesty and his humility exemplifies even his professional bedside manners of dealing with both patient and their respective family. He is well-respected among his colleagues throughout this community. There is a void that cannot be filled by another physician who may have equal or greater credentials because Dr. Iftikah Ahmad is a staple in this community, and he will forever be cherished as he move on to the next chapter of his life. Certainly, he's a consultant to many and will continue to be throughout this community. So, thank you, commissioners, for agreeing to declare January 31st, 2018, Dr. Iftikah Ahmad's Day throughout Putnam County. And I know that that proclamation will be adequately prepared and signed off by all of you all because you have either been directly or indirectly touched by such a great man. The measure of a great man is not in what he has gained, but it is in what he gives. And Dr. Ahmad is the epitome of giving back to this community. And I would ask all to please join in with this commission to celebrate Dr. Ahmad, and we cannot celebrate him without celebrating those in his office, Ms. Merwin and Ms. Yeverton, who, again, have been longtime, and their commitment to Dr. Ahmad, their commitment to this community says volumes about who they respect as the physician. We know there's only one great physician, but we have a mighty gracious physician, and that is Dr. Iftikah Ahmad.
Mr. Ahmad, we have this pen for you. This is our Putnam County, and this is one for each one of you. And I wanted to tell you thank you. Mr. Minnick, Larry Minnick is my father-in-law, and he talks so highly of you, and I thank you for keeping him around. Thank you. Get my commissioners up here to tell you thank you. Dr. Ahmad. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Merwin. Mr. Ahmad, if you'd come up front here, and we'll have some pictures taken.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's okay, sir. It's not about me.
Do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and honorable commissioners, and Reverend Flag. I'm thankful to Putnam County for accommodating me these many years. I came in '73, and late Dr. Roy Campbell, Charles Barner, and Dr. Walter Weigel were the instrumental who recruited me to come here. I was the sixth physician in the town, and today, by the grace of God, we have more than 60 physicians. I started practice in Palm Avenue, where there was professional pharmacy Riley Bennett. Some of you may remember him or don't. Punk Walker was running with Harold's City Drug Store, and then he separated and started Palm Drug Store. Putnam Memorial was a good hospital, but it had run out of its utility. Facility were poor, so we moved to invite HCA to come and give a proposal. And finally, in open public hearing in St. John River Junior College, public approved for them to come, and HCA built a modern facility. During the time, economics changed, and Columbia came in, and that was the darkest part of the health care in Putnam County because they were more interested in profit and not interested in improving infrastructure or facilities. I'm so glad that HCA came back, and we have a hospital which has up-to-date equipment, up-to-date facilities, and the whole outlook of employees have changed, that we are here to take care of you. And I'm seeing positive results, and kudos to the county to providing the atmosphere, and kudos to HCA for pouring in literally millions of dollars to upgrade the facility. It has been a challenge to work in this community, which has one in three people didn't have insurance, but it did not matter. And my team, which is Bobby Yelwington and Edna Merwin, they have been with me since '73. So, when you called, you caught one of them to talk. You did not get press one or press two. And that is a first consoling thing to patient, that they are talking with somebody who knows. And my patients always came to office as a family. It has been a great experience and a great city to raise the family. My children all educated here and all went to University of Florida, and they all went further. My daughters are attorneys, and my son was engineer. But later on, he went into politics, became mayor of San Carlos, California, but then he had sudden cardiac death, and that was the darkest moment I ever had in my life. But we recovered. Town was very, very consoling and helpful. It is with heavy heart that I am quitting practice because for last one month, I have done nothing but hug my patients, and some of them cry. But I tell them, "My phone is listed, as always, and you can always call me, but I will not be writing prescriptions." My wife would have been here if she knew this, but she went to California to attend grandchildren's birthday, so that's why she's not here. In the end, I will thank you again, and thank you, people of Putnam County, for accepting me and for making my life a really thrilling ride. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, Doctor.
If anyone is looking at the agenda, the next thing on here is item four, which is the Guardian Ad Littim. That's not going to be presented, and neither is the presentation by Mary Kay Engelking. So, at this time, we're going to have a very short recess, and then we're going to reconvene with our Port Authority. Our Port Authority, we, at this time, we don't have all of our paperwork on the Port Authority that we were looking for, so we're just going to do the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I make a... Approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Okay, we have a proper first, proper second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion approves. We open up with any new business? Anyone want to present new business? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the good work of the Finance Department and Susan Frank, our Finance Director, they were able to recover $13,727 from the State of Florida Department of Revenue. These were sales taxes that were charged to the county on the Bargeport property rental. And you can apply to have those come back to us, and so with the work of Ms. Frank and her staff, they were able to recover the $13,700 that we had paid to the estate for those rents received. And what they do is they just bill you based on your rent amount, whether you collect them or not, they expect you to pay them. So, she fought hard and went back and got those dollars back for Putnam County, so I wanted to thank her for her hard work. Now, you would think $13,000 in a $110 million budget doesn't make a lot of difference, but we all know where we're at, and everybody's been working hard to try to find every dollar to get back in that budget, and so I wanted to thank her for those efforts and tell you that good news. Thank you.
Thank you. You can, go ahead.
Mr. Smith or Ms. Frank? Is it the statute, far statutes allows for us, and the fact that we're Racick County, what allows us to ask for our sales tax back? Could I do that in business?
It's related to the PDM bridge write-off, and they have certain criteria for when you can request money back, and one of them is for bad debts.
I see.
It's strictly because it was a bad debt.
All right. Good deal.
Thank you.
Good work.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion to accept that and change that? No, it just automatically comes back to the Port Authority. Thank you.
All right, any discussion on old business?
Mr. Chairman, I'm still working on what y'all signed me with last time around. It's...I'm having to dig a little deeper than what I thought I was going to, but I'm still working on it.
Yes, sir, and I'm glad we're on forward motion. All right, well, seeing none, and we'll close our portion of the Port Authority. So, Port Authority's adjourned, and we will reopen and re-adjourn our normal meeting and today, and now is time for public comment. Ms. DeVito? Yes, please come up. Yes, Diana.
Yes, sir. My name is Diane Dearhead.
Just a second. Is Mr. DeVito in the audience? Okay. Go ahead, please. Do you have a name and address?
My name is Diane Dearhead. I live in Crescent City, or outside of Crescent City limits. This is the third time in two years I have come before y'all. I've talked to Mr. Pickens, he's from Crescent City, about the noise ordinance, something that needs to be passed. I have got a copy of the Crescent City noise ordinance. I talked to the commissioner there, where that if the noise is...if I can hear it a block away, then you've got a problem, that they could sign a complaint. The sheriff will go out, and they can get fined. And I'm like, "Okay, I live outside the city limit, so why am I being punished?" I've called Governor Scott's office. They said it's ultimately up to the...y'all, the commissioners. Last time I was here, Mr. Manning had shook his head. What's going before? The Supreme Court is the noise coming from vehicles, not residents. My husband is a 12-hour shift worker. He drives from Crescent City to St. Augustine six days a week. I have a gentleman that lives down the road, where my family has lived for over 70 years, that works at Georgia Pacific, and you know their shift, what that's like. I have to call the sheriff's office multiple times a week, especially on the weekend, and it gets annoying when you have to call three or four times because of people that are a block or two over are blaring their music so loud that with my windows closed, my air conditioner going, my TV, and I've even showed an officer that has come to my house, my TV volume all the way up to 40, and you can still hear these people booming. I have met, the last time I met with Captain Ursery, which I've known him for years, he went and come out to my house, and we went through a drive-through because of my neighborhood. Like I said, my family's first people out there, been out there for 70 years, and showed him every house because I have went out there because I have had officers get smart with me, "Well, I need an address," or I'm imagining things, and I'm like, "Dude, I'm holding the phone out, and you can't hear this?" I have showed him every house that I've had problems with the people, with the music, and the problems where the drug dealing is going on. My neighborhood has went, excuse my French, to crap. I can't afford to move. I'm disabled. I've been out, like I said, my family's been there for 70 years. I've got a printout of the Crescent City noise ordinance, and I also have another printout of what to do when the neighbors are too loud. I didn't make multiple copies because I didn't know how many commissioners there were, but I wished, I mean, two years, something needs to be done. I mean, if y'all can look, put yourself in our shoes, if it was your family, if it was your wife, your daughter, your son, driving that far, working multiple shifts, and you're getting sleep deprived because other people in the neighborhood just want to party and blare their music as loud as they want to. I mean, sleep deprivation causes people to fall asleep behind the wheel of their car in an accident, causes them to lose their job because they're falling asleep, and it causes them to do crazy things. I'm trying to keep violence from happening in my neighborhood. You know, I don't want it to be because, like I said, third time in two years, I've been up here, and nothing's been done, is, okay, is it going to take somebody getting hurt, somebody getting killed, or end up on the 12 o'clock, 11 o'clock news?
Now, you have contacted the...you've contacted us up here?
Yes, sir. I've been, this is the third time in two years.
And you've contacted codes?
And I've code enforcement, I've...
And you've contacted the Sheriff's Department?
The sheriff's office when Mr. Hardy was up...
We'll see what we can do.
When Mr. Hardy was in office, I got to run around, and like I said, I've went out, David Ursery has went out there, and I've showed him all the problem areas. Nothing is being done, and I, like I said, I don't want to see anybody get hurt or something get started or, like I said, end up on the news.
We need to wrap it up. I will, I will see what we can do. You can't give that to us. That has to go to Tony. Thank you. And... No problem. Mrs. Cooper? Please, your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Lisa Cooper, and I live at 300 Persimmon Street in Pomona Park, Florida, 32181. And I want to thank you for the opportunity of letting me speak this morning. I've been a resident of Putnam County now for over 10 years and a camping visitor for over 20. My employment background is 35 years of successful property management in varying income brackets. I've worked with all kinds of people. I want to be able to do business in my community and be able to give back to my community and make it a better place to live for all of us.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Pull that mic a little closer to you.
The reason that I am here today is because I want to open my cyber cafe south of Crescent City, and I was shut down three days later because of ordinance 2017-23. I had started the process to open that cyber cafe in April of 2017. Since I already run a cyber cafe called Nemo's, I was wondering why I did not receive any information on any of these meetings that led to the ordinance 2017-23. I think a letter should have been sent out or a notification of some kind so that I could have attended the meetings and known what my options were with this location. I would have found a way to open before the ordinance 2017-23 went into effect. That would just be common sense. I had not heard of this ordinance, but was given a copy by Charlie Ekman when he came in and shut us down. He said we had a real nice place with a few items that needed to be corrected, and those items had already been completed by the end of last week. I thought that since I started this venture in April 2017, that I would be able to stay open once all of the fire marshal, code enforcement, zoning, publics work, sheriff's office, DOT, and everything passed inspection, that I would be able to reopen. And I was told by Mr. Kevin Powell that I could not make an application now, and he would not accept it or grant me an application, and he told me to contact the attorney, which I did, and he sent me to y'all. He stated that you would have to be the governing body that can make an exception and let me apply to make sure that my business is run by the new standards, which I still haven't seen, but I would love a copy of because I want to make sure I do business right. With our history here, you can see I'm not a fly-by-nighter, and I plan ahead. I started...I just want to open my business, is what I want to do. I feel very misled and stabbed in the back by the ordinance. I started the Sharkies opening adventure when I found a location. I went to the office in April of 2017 where you get your business license. I was told that it was no longer required to have one in the county, and if you were in a city like Pomona Park, check with the city that you're in. Well, I'm not in a city. I am south of Crescent City, so therefore I am in the county, not a city. So, they said there was nothing that I needed to do, which I thought was kind of odd because when I opened up Nemo's, I did have to get a business license. But I feel at that time I made sufficient application for my business. I went to renew my license for the cyber cafe called Nemo's in Hitchcock's Plaza in early August, and I received the same pamphlet with the same information that I did in April 2017 when I applied and asked questions about Sharkies. I understand the stigma that goes with the fly-by-night cyber cafes, and I hate them. We have one in Hitchcock's Plaza that is breaking my heart right now to see the way that business is being conducted there. I have shared some with the fire marshal and code enforcement. They're not running a good business. They're not treating our people that live here well. They're doing things that we don't want to have in our community.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Before you go any further?
Uh-huh.
That is one of the problems that we've had, is that businesses were not operating as they should have been. Excuse me. That's why we did the ordinance. Excuse me. That's why we did the ordinance. I know the ordinance was, was put out there since last year. I guess what we will do at this time, since you did file, you've done some things, we can check and see, and if it's not timely, then you're just not going to be able to open it at this time.
Mr. Chairman, could we call Mr. Powell down here and get an-
You can.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while he's walking up, I don't think that when that ordinance was passed that we left anything in there that would allow for us to give a special exception of any kind to somebody who hadn't filed an application yet.
No, sir, I don't think there was.
Unfortunately, I think the only way we can make this happen is if we re-change the ordinance again.
Right. The only, well, the way it was written is if you had all your stuff at this date, then you could. And obviously, you, you obviously did not-
But representatives of the city did not tell me what I needed to do in April before the ordinance was even a gleam in somebody's eye. And that's what I am concerned about.
Point of order here. The bottom line is, this, this board last year took a long time on this, and I mean, we even sent it back numerous workshops. It was in the front page of the paper numerous times. We worked hard on this throughout the county to make sure that everyone was represented, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Powell right now, sir.
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Yeah, the ordinance went into effect, and we knew when the business tax receipts were going to go away that we were going to have us, uh, elapsed. However, it is in statute by the state that anything that comes in for a, a, a change of, of use occupancy, this building being from business to assembly, has to come before the DRC. It has to come to our, our attention. There's a lot of things that have to be looked at. Parking, the, the septic tank, fire, all of these things. So it's, it's always been in statute since 2000 that anything that happens has to come into our office. Now, the business tax receipts went away, and there was a lot of confusion in that area with business tax receipts. But as this commission said, this was presented in the paper, and the workshops were going on between August and October, and then it went to a vote in, in November on, on the ordinance. So regardless of whether the business tax receipt, which you don't need, but there still has to be a change of use, we still have to know what's going into these buildings. Now, it can be done as much as administratively, if it's a business-to-business, but we're going from a, a business occupancy to an assembly occupancy, and there's a lot of things that go into that, so that would have to come to us and then go through a DRC process. None of these things were put in place. We had several individuals out on the west end of the county that were trying to come in and do this, and they could not get all the paperwork in time before the ordinance. So they tried, and they were not successful at doing it. So like, like I said, I, I know this was all presented. It is an ordinance. I have to enforce this ordinance. And there again, I have law by the state that says anything that's changed of use has to come to us anyways.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Powell? And the board last year took a very deliberate stance on this issue, and to the point of, we gave people an opportunity that were, that were trying to get their cyber cafe up and running before this happened. The dates here, are they correct as far as what Ms. Cooper is presenting to us today?
I'm not aware, I'm, I'm going on what she said, that she came in in April. I do not have firsthand knowledge of that. There again, I was not in, in charge of the department at that time. But there again, we, we did talk in, in excess about losing the business tax receipt and triggering our ability to know what's going into a space. There again, we did present some information to you, trying to address that issue. I think we need to take that back to workshop and, and present that back to you, that businesses have to understand, they do have to come in and, and, you know, for change of use, those type of things. There again, administratively, business-to-business, mercantile-to-mercantile is not an issue. However, we're going from a business to an assembly occupancy, and that can create a lot of, a lot of problems in, into a particular location.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Chairman, I saw the floor.
Yes, sir.
I think if anything, if we, if we're sympathetic or not sympathetic to this case today, this should be an agenda item, so all the information can be documented from Mr. Powell's office. I see Ms. Cooper over there waving her hand, but this isn't the place to do that. This is the place for public comment, and it's not a place to resolve this issue unless it's an agenda item. And I agree with Commissioner Turner. There might not be a scenario that we can grant satisfaction because we didn't build that in. We built it into the front end of the ordinance and not the back end. So there's my statements, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity.
You have any comments, Mr. Manning?
Yes. The ordinance does not provide the board the ability to, to waive, and I don't believe you could lawfully do so without opening yourself up to lawsuits from other entities that didn't receive a waiver. Really, the only option would be to, to lift the moratorium for this board.
What about sufficient?
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Yes, please.
I think the commissioners are, are correct, that this is not the agenda this morning or the forum in which we're going to be able to address this concern and come to a resolution, whether, whether for or against the, 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 the request here. I think we need to put this back where it belongs, which is in the Office of Planning and Development, and let staff work with Ms. Cooper and see if we can get resolution that way, one way or the other. And then if it needs to come back in front of this commission to discuss the moratorium, then we'll put it on such agenda.
Okay. So Ms. Cooper, I think what you, you sound like you've, you've, you've done a really nice job there. It's probably a very nice place. However, if it didn't fall into the, the date line like it should have, then we're going to follow our, our, our rules up here. But you can get with Mr. Powell, ma'am. You can, you can check with Mr. Powell, and if indeed it did fall into that, that window that says you can open it, then you could open it. If not, then I'm afraid it's, it's, it's going to have to be moved to somewhere else.
Can I transfer the one that I have now?
Mr. Chairman, she needs to come to the microphone, and she's going to carry on a conversation with you, I think.
I'm sorry. I just feel like that I planned so far ahead that I'm being punished because I don't read the paper. I live near Crescent City, and I read their paper, but I don't read the Putnam County paper. World's bad enough, I don't need anymore.
Ma'am, I'm going to cut you off right there, because we've, we've listened to this enough. The, the point is, you're going to have to get with planning and zoning.
Well, what are you telling people that are coming into your business, I mean, to your business office now? Is my only concern that somebody else doesn't get treated the same way I am?
They're being told that they cannot do that at this time.
Are they given a copy of the ordinance that they say cyber cafe?
I would assume so.
And if they are changing it, say, from a business to a church, which would be the same thing, are they given the application rights that we have to go through? Or are they able to apply at any time? I'm just curious.
Okay, I believe so. And Mr. Powell, if you don't mind?
Yes, anybody that's due in a change of occupancy does come in, it does go through a DRC process. However, going by the ordinance, there's nothing I can do. There was no application that was made to go to DRC prior to the ordinance taking effect. So there's nothing that my department can do to move this forward based on our ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, let me say, we knew the business tax, getting rid of that would have some effect, but it was a positive thing for our businesses in Putnam County. And it did alert our Planning and Building Department about potential changes that were going on. But we did the right thing, and we got rid of a tax that was costing more money to collect than it was bringing in. That's good government, and I will not apologize to that. And the other thing is, I didn't want to infer that you had to read the plac of daily news, but surely our department, Planning and Development, did an admirable job out there notifying these cyber cafes of what was coming down the path. So we, we did all we could do humanly possible, put on our website, we had meetings. Everything was open to the public. There was so much transparency on this issue. So that's the end of my comments, Mr.-
Yes, and I think that is the end of it. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Powell?
No, I, I agree with Commissioner Harvey about the business tax receipt. However, it, it left a void between Planning Development, Fire Marshal, to know what is going in, because we do want to know if the occupancy is going to fit the space. So this is something that we're going to have to re-address, that we brought to the commission before, on, you know, providing a, a certificate to them as to the occupancy use in group. And if not, if it doesn't fit that, then they would have to go through the DRC process, which many people do when they come in to open a business. They do go through the DRC process, understanding that the, that there is a change in use of the structure.
Please educate the people, is all I got to say.
We, we do try our best. Thank you very much. Is there any other out here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll go to our consent agenda. Any items that we see that we need to be, that we want to pull? I'll start with Mr. Lible.
I have none.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Turner?
I have none.
I guess it's my day. I have item F and item M, and these are just really exciting things, so I just-
Well, then I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Garcia, could you make your way to the podium, please, on item F? And just for the public to know, and this is, I'm not going to put words in your mouth. I'm going to let you tell the public what you told me the other day, and how exciting, I know this is a purchase of a vehicle, right? How exciting is that going to be? But it has a little history to it that I want you to share.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. As you know, it's an interesting partnership with a state agency, which I am as the Florida Department of Health. We also have a partnership with the county. And just as a general point of information, everything that we buy, unless it's bought with federal funds, belongs actually to our county. So every vehicle we have purchased in our past immediately gets the transfer title to our county. So just FYI. But most of the time, we're purchasing it, purchasing under state rule. And we have found that we are not able to purchase locally if we follow those rules. But because of our relationship and our agreements, we are actually able to purchase under county rules. And so we have contacted the purchasing department, and we contacted budget, and have, are requesting that we be able to purchase a vehicle with our fund allocation and be purchased by the county, since the car will actually be turned over to you anyway. And that actually ensures that we're able to purchase locally, and we want to continue doing that, if that meets with your approval. It's really nice to be able to, we try to buy locally and use local as much as we possibly can. And so we're real excited to be able to do this with your blessing.
Ms. Garcia, thank you so much for explaining that, and that's a great day in Putnam County, when we can buy local and shop local.
Yes, sir.
And we find a way to partnership to do that. So again, I was excited when you told me that, and I'm excited today. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You still have the floor, Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number N, M, as in Mary. Mr. Tompkins, could you come up front? This is an exciting program, and we've heard this through our workshops. We've heard this in our past meetings. But, Mr. Tompkins, if you could fly at a 30,000-foot level and just kind of tell, there's a little history here, and there's a little drop the ball, and now there is a pick the ball up and run with it type scenario.
Exactly. That's what we're doing. What we, we found out, this is a project that we were able to get secure funds from the Army Corps of Engineers to expand our water supply system in all of East Palatka. We had broken up into two phases. One would be the Dunn's Creek area, to create a loop there. And the second one would be, create a loop down 207 to the county line, and back down through Federal Point, and, and create that loop. Total cost of these things is about $28 million. And what we found out was, after doing a lot of research and looking, that Representative Micah, back in 2007, actually got congressional approval for this dollar through the Water Bill, the Water Resources Technology Act, which you have to have congressional approval for any of the federal agencies to even talk to you. So we found that we got this water approval, and so we started working on it, and we contacted the Corps, and they said, yes, it was still valid, and so we started working on it. I was working with Josh Gabiton, our, our federal lobbyist, and we did a lot of work with the Corps, with Congressman Yoho, Representative Yoho's office, Senator Bill Nelson's office, DeSantis' office, and Rubio's office. And we've got letter support from them, and that's why I've asked for this letter of support from the county, that we, we want to support this project. We want to go after the Corps money. And it could be a long-term project for us, and it would be our tremendous needed boost we need to get our utility system in East Palatka running in a profitable mode rather than in, in behind right now. So it's, it's a long history with this. It takes a long time to get this federal money. It, it's, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but we got to take it step by step, and this is one of the main steps we need, is the approval and the endorsement by the county to go along with congressional support we have for it.
And Mr. Tompkins, thank you for digging and finding that. And luckily, our federal lobbyist, Josh Gabiton, was Congressman Micah's aide at that time. So he remembered this very well, and this would be a big plus for the East Palatka area and bringing water around that loop and expanding that business corridor and residential. So again, I want to publicly thank you. When I saw this on the agenda, I just was ecstatic about it. So thank you very much, sir.
We're very excited about it, too. I wish we could get our money tomorrow and get going on it, but it'd be a tremendous boost for the county.
Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor, sir. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add just a brief comment to, to the dialogue here this morning regarding this project. Again, kudos to, to Mr. Tompkins and staff for, for bringing us to the county. I received an email yesterday afternoon at 3:37 from Congressman Yoho's office, from Cat Camick, the Deputy Chief of Staff, letting us know that they will be submitting another letter of support today, which was yesterday, because of the opportunities for Putnam County. So again, Congressman Yoho and his office are doing great things for Putnam County. We're being talked about in the circles in, in DC that matters most. And again, kudos to, to press and his staff, but also a big, huge thank you to Congressman Yoho and their staff for the support that they continue to give Putnam County.
Just extremely good news. Did you have something to say, Mr.?
No, I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I approve the consent agenda, items A through M.
Okay. All right, we have a proper first, proper second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those not in favor, same sign. Motion moves. All the agenda items have passed. And if you take just a second here, I wanted to read what was handed to me.
Mr. Chairman, that's an item that I'm going to discuss.
Okay, this is what you're going to speak on?
Yes.
So Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just handed out a document to you, give you a little history. In 2006 and 2007, the county went out and sought and received loans of $13.5 million, and these loans were just recently paid off on January the 1st. There's a debt service of about $1.57 million a year on these loans that, and these funds were used to convert dirt to pavement and to resurface a number of roads in Putnam County. $14.4 million went to convert dirt to pavement for 26.01 miles, and $5.1 million was used to resurface 94 miles of pavement. And so back then, the philosophy was, because the one-cent sales tax was fairly new, and the discussions around the county, and I say this because some of you are new, you probably participated in these projects back then, particularly in the community events that were, that were held around the county. But back then, people said they would support this one-cent sales tax if it was used for road improvements. And so the vast majority of those dollars during that timeframe were used mostly for road improvement. But in addition, the county used a portion of these funds for various buildings and equipment projects, such as the Business Park Shell Building, the Emergency Operations Center, the Emergency Communications Towers, the Boston Week Community Center, the Interlock and Library Expansion- and Library Expansion, Restrooms at Triangle Park, and the wastewater system at the fairgrounds. So a lot of good came from that. And someone, I was talking to this the other day about this, they said, well, you know, you, you paid some interest on that over the years. Yes, we did, but it's the same philosophy that most people use when they buy a house. A lot of folks, including me, never had enough money just to pay completely for a house, but we didn't want to live on the street for that 20 years while we paid the house off. The county also took that same philosophy, that they wanted to provide these services, knowing that those dollars would come in, they would be able to meet their debt service, and, and get those amenities out, and people could enjoy those during that timeframe. So over those ensuing 10 years, all of those amenities have been used and enjoyed by the county. Those citizens that have purchased items and paid the one-cent sales tax have paid those back, and so now, that 1.5 million dollars that we've been paying in debt service now will stay with the Better Place Fund. So the Better Place Committee, as they meet and identify projects, will have a few more dollars now to work with for the future. So I thought it was good news, wanted to share that with you, as we continue to make improvements in the financial picture of the county. This is one more of those items that continues to support that the decisions that this commission is making are right and moving us forward, and so I wanted to congratulate you and the citizens of Putnam County for their foresight in this project and providing these amenities for our citizens. And that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman. Any, yes, sir, go ahead.
Is the 1.57 million budgeted to have been paid off in the Better Place Plan, or is that money that we just found?
It, it was anticipated in the budget.
Okay, so it's not additional monies to what's been budgeted, it's just additional monies available now that weren't available last year?
It's just a success story, and when we budget next year, we won't budget any debt service. This year, in the BPP, we budgeted the appropriate amount of debt service, which was less than prior years, because it was less than an entire year.
Okay, what did, what did we, and I know this is kind of a general question, what did we spend that part of the debt service for this past year up till, past fiscal year up till now, if it was paid off in January, that was maybe a third of it, so just throwing numbers at it, so what happened with the other million? What did we budget it for this year?
The things, road paving, animal control facility, little, small park projects, ambulances, fire trucks.
Basically, we spent that million dollars on other things necessary.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it just makes me wonder if we shouldn't, I've, I've been told a story, I don't remember by who, where they borrowed the money years ago, and it, because they felt like at the time, and nobody has a crystal ball, but they felt like at the time that the, that the asphalt, that part of the reason was that the asphalt prices were so high at the time, and they felt like they were gonna continue to rise, and that's a lot of the reason why they went in and tried to hedge those asphalt prices. Well, unfortunately, the gamble maybe, may or may not have paid off, because probably did in the point that we got to use the roads for the years, like Mr. Smith said, but on the, the price of asphalt went down, I understand, after that. So my, my point being is that maybe we need, if, if asphalt is at $87 a ton, or whatever Press said that it is now compared to then, maybe we need to look at this same thing again, now that asphalt prices are depressed, about going out and borrowing this money again, and doing, and paving a lot of roads at one time, and then paying it off over the years, because then, just like Mr. Smith said, we get to use those roads while this is going on. So just a suggestion, that maybe we should think about looking at that in a workshop in the future.
Well, we actually have a transportation workshop today, so.
Yeah, but I think it's a little too full for this conversation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that the other part, I was talking to Press about this earlier, also, when you bundle a lot of projects together, you get an economy of scale from, and savings from contractors, because they're gonna do a big project versus doing a one or $2 million project every year, that there's mobilization costs, there's, you know, all those other factors of bidding and that type of thing, so there are sometimes other savings, not just the projection of what asphalt is. So all those go into making that decision, but certainly, Press and his team is much more knowledgeable about that. But I remember that as being part of the conversation back then, was the economy of scale, when, particularly when you're resurfacing almost 100 miles of roads versus doing, you know, five or six miles, so all that goes into that decision-making. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the concept for that was very solid. I mean, it just was kind of bad luck that you did it, you know, at the upswing instead of the lower swing in the asphalt prices, but right now, the asphalt prices are very depressed, I mean, it would probably make more sense to look at it now, or certainly as much sense to look at it as, as before, and then we could pave a lot of roads. I think we need to look at that. Any comment on that?
Mr. Chairman, I do. You know, we have a lot of roads out there, and I believe Commissioner Turner's right on target with this. We have roads that are failing, asphalt roads that are failing, and if they don't get resurfaced soon, then we're talking a total rebuild, and that, that just doesn't make any sense. So I agree with Mr. Smith also, is the economy of scale and contracts, we could save a lot of money. So I believe this is a topic that, you know, Commissioner Turner, thank you for breaking the ice and moving that forward, and I believe it needs serious consideration and a proper plan coming from our department to say, hey, here's what we're gonna go for, because I think that these roads, I love dirt to pavement, but I also don't want to ruin, see our roads being destroyed. And, and truly, out in my area, there's some roads that are alligator crack really bad, and if they don't get some attention, we'll lose them, and then we'll, we'll be in a worse shape than we've ever been. So, and I'm sure that's throughout the whole county, it's not just in West Putnam. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, at that, I guess we do need to put it up just a second, and we do need to make sure that it gets on to a workshop. Then go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Just a question, are we, are we allowed, I don't really know who to ask this, one, one of the three of you. Do we, are we allowed to use Better Place money for, to repair existing roads? Or are we just?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Although, as a practice, we tend to resurface roads out of the last penny capital gas tax and build new roads, but we're not prohibited.
I guess my question was more of, if we did decide to move forward and borrow another 12 or 14 million, or whatever we did and move forward, we could use part of that money for existing roads as well as new dirt to pavement roads?
As long as it's a capital, considered a capital improvement with a life expectancy of five years or more, then it's, then it's okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm with you, I think I'd like to discuss this in the not-too-distant future, when everybody could do it, I think it'd be an excellent thing to look at.
I think you're right.
And, Mr. Chairman, man?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, our budget for resurfacing, if I'm not mistaken, is a million dollars a year. That doesn't go very far.
Right.
So let, let's just be honest here, we need an actual transportation plan for Putnam County, and, and taking that million dollars a year and putting that towards the loan payback or whatever, we could, we could make some serious strides, and, and I really appreciate this conversation coming out today, because it's a million dollars a year on some of these roads, I guarantee you, I could use a million on one road right now that needs servicing. And if we continue that, we'll lose a road before we ever create a road.
I don't think you're gonna get it all now, I'm a little bit in my area, too.
Well, then we got 200,000, that's not gonna go very far. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move to public hearing.
Public hearing?
It's, it's on my list here, public hearing.
There's nothing there.
Okay, all right, well, then let's, I didn't see anything else in there, so let's go to appointments.
I have one.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would like to reappoint Darlene Crowe to the Animal Services Committee.
Okay.
I have, I have one. I'd like to reappoint Brett Peterson to the, to the same committee.
Okay.
And how long is that term? Are they one-year terms? Does anybody know? Two-year? Okay.
I believe it's three, but I think it's one.
Three years.
Lisa said two.
I think that it's, they're staggered, depending on who it is, so it, I don't, we'd have to find out for sure, for these particular ones.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to know, 'cause I knew Mr. Peterson was gonna ask.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none today.
Mr. Harvey?
I have none today, thank you, sir.
Okay, and I have one. Ms. Jenny Robbins is on, doesn't say it, but it's the Better Place Plan here. Yes, but she would like to be reinstated. All right, and we do not have to vote on that, correct?
No, each one of these is, is by district, so there is no vote required for these particular appointments.
That's the way I understood it. So we'll now move to our county administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Just a couple of things, just some housekeeping. As you know, one of the concerns that we had last year that was handed to your new county administrator as a, as a task to move forward was your insurance concerns. There was a, at the Insurance Commission meeting, or Committee meeting, and I think it was in October, it was decided that there would be a subcommittee of, of six of us that would move forward with drafting an RFP, and getting the, the RP out. We are within the next two days of closing that RFP, so we will get back together as a, as a subcommittee and rank those RFPs. I believe we have a full Insurance Commission Committee meeting scheduled for sometime around mid-February, which we will discuss our rankings with the full committee, at which time, we will bring those recommendations to you five here at the second meeting in February for award of the bid, so we can get to work on, hopefully, what will be a, a long-term benefit, not only for the county and their general fund, but also for staff. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll get to work on that sometime early March. So I think that's a, a very aggressive timeframe in which we got this out and, and back, and I think we're, we're heading in the right direction with that. Need to commend staff for their hard work, as well as the representatives on the subcommittee from, from each of the constitutions that were involved, and I think they've done yeoman's work, and I think they're to be commended once we get this back out in front of the commission in February. Secondly, two weeks ago today, there was a serious challenge that was thrown out by the, by the Commissioners of getting an RFP for the landfill drafted. As you, as you're aware, staff and I met with each of the five elected officials and got input from each of you within a few days after that meeting. We have a draft, I believe you all have a copy of the draft, we will discuss that later today, and, and take whatever input and suggested changes to that RFP to heart today, and, and put it to pen to paper, so we can get that RFP out as well. Again, an opportunity to say thank you to, to staff that was involved in that, as well as the Commissioners for clearing your schedules on such short notice to, to meet with us and give us the input that we need. I hope that when we get through with the meeting today, that the information that's contained within, within the RFP encompass those thoughts and ideas and desires of this commission for what we're trying to accomplish here, and I look forward to your comments at 2:00 this afternoon on that. Other than that, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and so we'll go to Commissioner Comments, and I'm gonna go to Mr. Harvey first.
Oh, good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, this coming Thursday night, for anybody who wants to learn how to cook, 650 pork butts. I know, right? That's a lot. It's a lot of, yeah. Over there at the fairgrounds, we're gonna start at midnight. This is a, a cook for St. John's River State College Athletic Booster Program. This is to help with scholarships of those student athletes that attend out there. If you want to come, I hear Mr. Roach, Jim Roach, is gonna cook a great breakfast at 5:30 in the morning, and please come out and be a part of 650 butts being cooked at the fairgrounds. Bring your cooker, I think you have one, don't you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First off, the Port Authority, I don't think that we have to meet every month, do we? We only have to meet quarterly, don't we, unless there's actually something to do?
We need to discuss that, but what I have seen as an ordinance was that we're supposed to meet once a month.
Yeah, it, it is in there. After, after we had that last meeting, I had some further correspondence with the group that did their presentation, and, and, yeah, it's in there, it's supposed to be monthly, so it may seem.
Even if it's, it's.
Even if there's nothing to do, yeah, it's in the legislation, so.
No problem. Also, maybe I'd ask staff or something, where are we at on the planning commission not coming here unless it's appealed?
Oh, I, I, I still have to do some further research on that, but I, I will get that information to you.
Good, thank you. That was it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pickens?
A couple of things, just thank Tim Smith for that good news with some debt service paid off, and, and also, I don't know Dr. Ahmad personally, but it's just special recognition for him, for his years of service to Palatka and Putnam County, and you can see he was very sincere in his delivery, so just kudos for Carl Flag and, and then his staff for the commitment to, to Palatka. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Libel?
Thank you. I also would like to ditto that, Mr. Flag bringing the doc here, that was a long, long time of service in our community, very well appreciated. I would like to remind everybody, at Dunn's Creek Baptist Church tomorrow night, we've got the FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, will be holding a open house to serve the citizens that might have any comments on the road improvements, the four-laning of 17 South, and anything they might have on their mind, it's the time to go there. I believe it starts at 5:30 and runs to 7:30. You'll be very close with those times. Also, a big reminder, this Saturday at the Putnam or the Palatka Municipal Airport, K Larkin Field, we have a wonderful fly-in. If you've never attended this event, please take time to do it, you won't believe how entertaining it is, and we'll have planes and pilots from all over Florida and Georgia, Alabama, they come from all over. It's a really, really good time, showcase our airport, and bring the kids, they'll have music booths, we have the biggest car show we've ever had out there this Saturday. I don't know how many, but it'll be in the hundreds of cars. So there's something for everybody, come out to the airport Saturday morning, spend the day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, the meals are furnished. They generally have a barbecue there.
They sure do, at, at just a donation, so, and, and it's a really good barbecue.
Yes, very, very good. The show is always good.
All the trimmings, I mean, it's a plate, not a sandwich.
No, sir, yes, sir.
It's pretty good. So thank you for reminding me of that, Commissioner. Got it.
A lot of pigs gave their life this way.
We needed that. I don't have anything other than, I'm just so proud of our county, I, it's, it's just an enjoyable thing. I drive around a lot in the county, and I spend a lot of time out in the forest, too, but, which is entertaining, because I usually get a call about how bad the roads are, but I can get through them. But for every one negative, I bet you I get 100 positives, and the negatives are just generally that they, some people think we're still doing things the same way we've always done it, and I try to assure them that it's not, but most people do see it, things are moving, and I'm very proud to be in this county. Don't think I have anything else here. Mr. Turner, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, before we quit, we've got a, we've also got a DOT meeting tomorrow evening at the Ag Center to discuss the East End Road 100 intersection, so the new T, the new T intersection that DOT has agreed to put in, in lieu of a roundabout. So that's tomorrow evening, and Mr. Tompkins? Yeah, so we're, we're gonna be there also, I hope that we've got. we've got, I haven't seen anything anywhere about advertising, Amanda, just a regular legal notice or?
Yes, sir.
And where's that?
I, I wonder if I could impose on Brandon, if he could get it worked in the newspaper somehow, that there's going to be a meeting tomorrow evening at the Ag Center concerning the intersection of East End Road and Highway 100. I would appreciate it if you could.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest.
Do you remember what time that is, Press?
The time's drawn.
5:30?
And, and, Mr. Oliver, my, the way to get people there is say there's going to be a roundabout installed there.
And it'll be a packed house. They're not, they're not. Don't make them mad before they even get there.
That will bring them out there. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The Commissioners do need to stick behind. Amanda's trying to get individual pictures done today. Is that correct, Amanda? So if you'll stick around, she needs to get your pictures done.
I did not bring my comb with me, but that's the way it is.
You need bed powder, not comb.
All right, well, seeing that is it, we'll be adjourned.